Good evening, everyone. This is Monday, October 3, 2011, and I will call this meeting in the Norfolk City Council to order. This is an open meeting, and hosted over here in the corner of this actual room is the Open Meeting Act made accessible to all members of the public. I would ask that you would stand with us for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll continue with roll call. Coy?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Murin?
Here.
Brenneman?
Here.
Faust?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Okay, under action, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda that was provided you.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second. Motion with a second for approval of the consent agenda, if you would please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Next, approval of the full agenda as provided you.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Have a motion with a second for approval of the full agenda, again, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Presentation, our recreation update.
Dennis, we got direct update tonight?
Continue to make progress down at the facilities there. We opened up some additional parking on the south side of the armory for last weekend's football games. That's probably the extent of the parking that we'll have opened up for this year, maybe a little bit more for something late, late in the season. They started digging footings today for backstop wall and footings for the baseball stadium. They're starting the conduit for the lighting for the baseball field. We probably have about forty percent of the floors of the two pool structures poured. We pour about one or two pours a week. Last week, we had a great week. We got three pours in. Have the footings for the multipurpose building constructed, and the masons started work on the structural wall for that, so everything seems to be moving along there. We're putting in sanitary sewers for the pool facility this week, so making progress. Just hold out the nice weather for about another six or eight weeks, and things will be good.
About six or eight months, Dennis.
Well, winter will come in Nebraska.
I know.
Dennis, what's the status on the top rows of bleachers? Will those be accessed to the public this season, or is it about where it will be for the rest of the year?
We opened up a good portion of those for last weekend. The ones that aren't open are not open because of finishing up the press box installation. We did get the new press box up in the air last week. With any luck, it may be ready for use this coming week, weekend, hopefully. The materials are supposed to be coming in late today and to finish up the area between the two press boxes. And soon as we get that press box up and operational, we can open up the rest of the stadium, but we just left it in a straight line there, made for probably a more secure fencing than if we tried to go around just the press box area.
Thanks.
Any other questions at all? Okay. Thanks, Dennis. We'll move on then to public hearings. Public hearing before us tonight at the request of Agapi Pregnancy Center for a zone change from C1, which is local business district, to R3, multiple-family residential at 1309 West Norfolk Avenue. I would open the public hearing and look to Scott for information for us.
Mayor, Council, some of you at least may recall that this body took the action to create this particular property as a C1 district in the first place in an effort to support Agapi's desire to be there. What's occurred is their attempt to make that a residential use again. They would like to move that back to a residential category. Be duly noted that their first application was an R1 request after input from planning commissioners and some of the elected officials here tonight. The desire to have it go back to R3 was more an appropriate use. It's more akin to the other area around it. I would note that that particular area of the community on our comprehensive plan is shown as mixed use, so it doesn't have a definitive category. It anticipates that it's a transitional area that obviously someday will evolve into something, whether that's residential flavor or commercial is probably a matter of opinion. Most folks would indicate that when the right project comes along and those properties acquired move in a certain direction, it will probably take on a commercial flavor. But until such time, the challenge is always for these property owners is to have the ability to secure financing and maintain the property in the desired way that they'd like and the ability to secure permits to do some of those things. So the Agapi folks, and I believe Mr. Zekman's here this evening to speak to that, just wants to make it a lawful use as it stands today until that useful life evolves to something different. So this change will make them conforming again and allow them to have the desired buyer be able to secure financing and move in and use that property as they hope to. So again, it's one of those transitional areas that it's hard to forecast exactly what it's going to evolve into. And as I said, we're reversing an action you all took not too long ago to support their original request. It just didn't develop or continue the way they might have hoped to at that time. So I'll allow Mr. Zekman to fill in any blanks that I didn't offer you all, and if you have any questions, I'll try to certainly answer them.
Okay. Council, any direct questions for Scott before we ... okay. Then I would ask if there's anyone that does want to come forward and speak to this. If you would, we'll ask you to sign in for us, please, and state your name.
Thank you. I'm Bill Zekman. And what we're really looking at here is a simple change from the commercial that was set up in the past to the R3. R1 is what we originally were looking for, but we switched to the R3 because of the recommendation. And we have a buyer for it that wants to use it for residential purposes. So that's our reason for wanting to move it and have the changes.
Any questions for Mr. Zekman? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else that wants to come forward and speak in favor of or may have questions regarding this issue?
I do have a question. So this will be for multiple family use?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And ...
It will not necessarily be used that way by this individual.
Okay. So is there plenty of parking and all that that would go with that? Enough parking at that ...
Scott, you might.
Well, excellent question. I mean, they want to preserve the right to use it as a single-family residential, and as it stands, it meets and complies with all those things. If they wanted to make a conversion to multiple family, then we would have to be asking about those parking questions. Does it have room? That would be totally dependent on, you know, how they would decide to break up those pieces and the density they try to, and the total number of units they try to put there. Moreover, it just kind of doesn't create a spot of R1 in the middle of the remaining R3 that's in that area. So that was the input that I've received from the elected officials about trying to keep it consistent and not have that R1 spot there. But it's my understanding they want to use it as a house for one family.
Correct.
And which is allowed under the umbrella of the R3 category, so.
Thank you.
Good question. Any others? Okay. Thanks, Mr. Zekman. With that, then, I will close the hearing and look for consideration of ordinance number 5183 rezoning 1309 West Norfolk Avenue from C1 to R3.
I will introduce ordinance number 5183.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Any further discussion on this at all? If not, I would look for a short title.
The planning commission report first is the planning commission held a public hearing on September 20, 2011, for a zone change from C1 to R3 at 1309 West Norfolk Avenue at the crest of Agapi Pregnancy Center. Agapi Pregnancy Center originally requested a zone change to R1 in this area that is predominantly C1 and R3. A public hearing was held on the R1 request by the planning commission on August 16. The commission tabled the request due to a lack of support for the R1 request. After staff contacted board members, the decision was made to reapply for a zone change to R3 to be more compatible with the area. The planning commission voted to recommend approval on a six to zero vote. The short title for ordinance 5183 is an ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay. And with that, if you would please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5183 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5183 on second and third?
Second.
We have a motion with a second to pass on second and third reading, suspending the rules. Any other discussion? If not, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5183 carries on second and third.
Okay, and under the regular agenda, if you remember, on September 19, we actually tabled the consideration of resolution number 2011-41, which was levying a special assessment in the amount of $237.99 against property at 1202 West Prospect Avenue for mowing and removal of weed and litter. I would request a motion to pull and ask for further discussion.
I'll make a motion to pull this off the table.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right. John, do you, do we want to address this? Do we have questions here?
I could just give you a brief overview of what transpired since then. It's pretty straightforward. I just thought it's kind of made me smile. I don't, for the mayor and council, for those who didn't know, the next day, we had a top story on, just made the top story on Channel 9, which I thought was kind of interesting. It made me smile because I was the fire chief. I guess I was used to talking about floods and fires and death and destruction as city administrator. I'm talking about raspberries on TV, so it kind of made me smile. But had good interaction with the neighborhood up there, and actually, I went up and visited with one of the neighbors in particular, was able to catch him just outside, and he was very thankful to the city of Norfolk for taking the action to mow that lot next to him. And as the television station interviewed that gentleman and then the next-door neighbor to the west, they got favorable responses to them. I don't know if you caught that interview. But at the end of the day, these kind of issues kind of become a neighborhood issue for us and something that our prevention staff deals with fairly often. When we went and did our due diligence and looked at the historical enforcement action on this, staff did just what they're supposed to do, met their timelines, gave proper notice. On the seventh, we sent the certified letter to Mr. Spatz, our Spots. He didn't pick that certified letter up till the 22nd of June, and then he has five days until we can issue that order. On the sixth day, we issued the order to mow after he received it, and the lot was mowed that day. So staff's due diligence, I think, was accurate and timely and appreciated by the neighborhood for what, so with that being said, I would encourage the mayor and council to file the assessment and also move on to item number 25, which is, we can talk about as well, but that's a, staff would recommend a denial or disallowing of that bill for the raspberries. Our city crews, can I lump that together, Mayor?
Please do.
The city crews that went up there and mowed that, found an overgrown lot. They mowed it, didn't see any signs of a garden. The neighborhood next door that I talked to personally said that if there was raspberry bushes in there, he didn't see them because there was many bushes and overgrown weeds, and he described it as a mess. And then after city crews mowed, the owner of the property did have a local contractor come in there and do some leveling on that lot as well. So they went about and did some leveling and I think took care of any remaining weeds or whatnot there. So our due diligence was appropriate. I think we, the staff made no mistakes in this, and we're right on target, and we got a satisfactory outcome for the neighborhood. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Sheen, there was some indication that there was a lot of contact with our city, like Mr. Koba and Nordius. Did we find out that there was a lot of contact or was very little?
Those guys can address it directly, but I believe we've had more contacts since 2008. We've had other contacts, is that correct, John? Go ahead, please.
We've had contacts reference this property in 2008 and also in 2010. Those contacts did result in the property being mowed by Mr. Spots, who has just arrived here. The contact in 2011, as was mentioned, certified letter, that letter was received basically 14 days after, and the mowing took place after that. I've had contact with Mr. Spots after that time, but had no contact with him, you know, prior to us having the lot mowed. It only came about now that the billing has come around.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Any questions?
Mr. Spots? Yep. I will just bring you up to date. We have actually removed from the table the resolution that we talked about last week that the council wanted to follow through with and make sure things were handled correctly. I'm sorry you missed the information here that was passed by the city administrator. If you have questions, I certainly, you're here, so we'll allow you to address us, and if you want to approach, if you will come up front here and ...
Does that affect my part of the agenda?
No, not yet.
We basically had to take it off the table so we could talk about it, so we're just, we're in that process right now.
All discussion.
Yep. So if you have something you want to add, please do.
Sure. First, I want to thank you for the welcome I got last time I was here. It made me a lot more comfortable now. I've got, I did bring some of those phone records that I mentioned before, and I brought copies so I could distribute these to the council members. These show, what I did was, I've highlighted contacts with my contractor in one color, contacts with the city in yellow, and contacts with a neighbor who would have been involved, you know, eventually was involved with some of the demolition along the boundary. I color-coded those and brought those along. The first one that I'll hand down is one that has telephone contacts, May 13, 17, and 18 with the city. Fire, health, and codes, they seem to be grouped together, and streets, street department. On this month's bill, April and May, there's an initial contact with a contractor on May So can I just hand this to my right?
You sure can, if you want to pass them around. John, remind me again the date of this letter and the action taken, would you?
The letter date was June 7.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'd like to note this is all prior to June 7. Then I have May and June billing, numerous contacts with the neighbor and the contractor. No contacts here with the city.
Can I ask, I'm a little confused. You're contacting the city prior to the letter coming to you in regard to?
In regards to continuing the use of the original demolition permit to complete demolition, which I remarked at the time would be removing the lawn, sixty percent of the lawn. The next bill I have is June and July. I have numerous calls to the city, streets, fire, health, zoning, and then numerous calls to the contractor, who by this time, I was checking back often to see if he could complete work. He was very busy and was taking some time to get to my work. I seem to be missing one, so I'm going to look, take a look for it.
John, can you help me at all understand what the demolition permit was that was provided? Do you know? Do you remember? I'm sorry, I ...
The, I believe he's referring to demolition permit related to, at the time of his purchase of this property, which was in, he had purchased the property, I believe, in March of 2008, and it had a structure on it that had been condemned and was required to be demolished. If I'm not mistaken, there were aspects of that demolition that Mr. Spots felt were incomplete, and so he was having some additional demolition done, including some of the retaining wall on the Prospect Avenue side of the property.
John, that demolition of that property, what kind of a structure was it?
It was a single-family dwelling.
And is there a structure on that property today yet?
At this time, there is a residential garage at the rear of the property.
And is that garage in good standing?
No, the garage is in poor condition, and then there is a zoning aspect related to the presence of a garage on a lot that doesn't have a primary use.
Is the garage under a demolition order?
There had been a, there had been a demolition order issued on the garage.
But the garage hasn't been demolished?
The garage has not been demolished.
So that's still an outstanding issue as we speak here.
That is an issue that Steve Nordius and I discussed with Mr. Spots in a discussion that we had with him just last week as to expectations for the garage, the limited use of that garage in the event there was going to be construction on the property, but realization that that garage would have to be removed from the property after a new structure was built. Mr. Spots had indicated a desire to utilize the, that existing garage as a means to stage some materials that he might use in a building construction project on the property.
Mr. Spots, go ahead.
I don't want to get issues mixed up. I reserve the right to discuss the garage issue later. I'm going to try to ...
That's fine. I'm trying to stay straight on in that all too, so continue with.
This is a July-August phone bill. It has, it has continuing calls to the contractor who was completing the work about, about this time, and I might have been remaking arrangements to pay him for the work that had been done. These are all in July, July and August. So that's evidence I have to show, like I stated at the last meeting, that I made contact prior and after the city issued its orders for mowing. In addition to that, Mr. Koba was kind enough to come to the lot and inspect the lot, and I think he can attest to you that there's a clear distinction between the earthwork that was completed and the portion of the, of the lawn that actually needed mowing. And it's about a 60/40 split. That's what I based my offer on to pay for part of the mowing that I believe was necessary. And I do want to point out that I think Mr. Koba just said, just stated that I had no contact with him or the departments prior to the issuance of that letter. There's proof right there that I did.
Well ...
I believe that's what was stated, Mayor.
Yeah.
What was stated was that the timeframe between, when you received the letter, Mr. Spots, and when the demolition or the mowing was done, was there contact made then, and did you verbally talk to anyone or have any written correspondence with the city staff?
There was phone contacts made. I received the letter and signed for it about June 22, and then I immediately, or practically immediately contacted. These phone records show calls made on June 27.
To who? And who did you talk to?
To the people that are listed in the phone contacts.
The number ...
City and Fire Division.
Do you know who he's owning? Did you talk to Mr. Koba? Because Mr. Koba's name's listed on the complaint form.
Yes, I attempted to contact him.
Did you talk to him?
I think I talked to Mr. Nordius because Mr. Koba was out of the office.
Did you have contact with him, Steve?
I believe I talked to him once. I don't get involved with the mowing issues, and I would have informed you that that information you'd have to get from John. It's just the mowing is something I ...
And secondarily, when you called me 10 days ago or so, sir, we talked, you talked, you wanted to negotiate with me about the cost of the mowing and the bill and the assessment? Is that correct?
I was offering to negotiate, yes.
I'm not sure it's that, and what, do you recall what my response was?
I think you were taking a pretty hard line that, that I was to bring these bills to you and do pretty much what you were ordering.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think that's fairly accurate. Do you recall the question about, you know, the city of Norfolk's really not in the business to mow residential lots. We got plenty of other work to do. And I asked you, I asked you fairly straightforwardly, if you, why didn't you just mow the lot when you're certified? And you remember what you said?
Probably something along the lines of what I've stated up till now.
No, you said, "I didn't, I don't want to talk about that." That's what you told me, so I mean, you know, I don't understand that, you know, so I don't need to get in an argument or anything, but that's, that's the point of the matter.
Well, you were very argumentative that day, and actually, I saw no point in discussing that with you. I, I had called to negotiate, but what it turned into was an argument. And I think I repeated to you, do you recall, and I repeated to you about three times that I called to negotiate and not to argue? Do you recall that?
We're not in the business to negotiate bills for raspberries or to negotiate assessments. We filed due process, sir.
Excuse me, I have one more item. Okay, on this bill that I received, it says I have a customer number. Now, you might think this is a flagrant argument, but most people, when they're being treated as customers, might be summoned to see the work done. So whatever the result of your voting is on this bill, bottom line, I'd like to request that you could maybe make, somebody could make a motion that the bill be settled for a hundred dollars, but before anything happens, I'd like to just state there's a customer number on this bill, and I'd like to be treated like a customer, if that's what I am. No one had called me to the lot to let me know that the mowing was going on at the time that it went on. I asked Mr. Koba if he didn't think that that would be a reasonable thing to do when these mowings are done. Maybe somebody is disabled, maybe somebody's hard of hearing, maybe somebody doesn't understand what they're signing, and also with the issue of taking anonymous, anonymous reports.
What do you mean by that?
Well, at the last meeting, I think Mr. Koba stated that the report had come from someone anonymously, the complaint.
Yes, yep. And I understand that, and I mean, there's ...
Well, I think, I think that that kind of might lead down the path, that type of fact gathering might lead down the path to making mistakes, so.
Well, but I would assure you that prior to any mowing taking place, it would have been up to city staff to go out there, take a look at what it was that was brought to the attention of city staff in order to correct the issue before us. And not everyone is willing to give a name and a number because they don't want to be brought into these kind of things, and I, at some point, I appreciate what you're saying there, but we respect that right of those citizens to be able to call and ask that we at least take a look at. So I would tell you that I believe that's what happened there. We went out there, we viewed it and saw it to be a concern as well.
We went out there, we viewed it and saw it to be a concern as well. So I think, you know, it gets back to, while I understand that, you know, it's not exactly maybe the way you would have liked it to have gone, if we send our crew out there, Mr. Spots, and ask them to take care of an issue, calling you first might be a little difficult to get a hold of you and ask you, I don't believe you live locally, do you? I may be making an assumption, but I don't know that you're within the city, so to be able to get you to come over on a moment's notice probably wouldn't be easy either. So I...
Well, I've got an answering machine. I'm always available. And in these series of calls, it's been sort of one way, where I always need to call the city and never get a call from the city. And as to the issue of anonymity, if, if the city agent wanted to follow up with the person who made the call to gather more information, to see if it was accurate, I don't think they could do that in this case.
No, but I think we could visually go out there and take a look ourselves and see that it was an issue. And I believe that from some of the due diligence that was made by city staff after, you know, when the council asked for this to be tabled, and we went out and did some visits, and certainly there was concern by those living next to that property, Mr. Spots. So I believe that what was done was done correctly. I apologize it, maybe you weren't able to pick up the mail timely or whatever the concern might be, but again, we have a process in place too, that we, you know, we sent you notification, and we live by, you know, it's a matter of how many days were granted you to have the issue either worked through with us and resolved, and that wasn't met.
Thank you, Mayor. Since you mentioned about neighboring properties, I'd like to reserve the right to bring that issue up later.
Sure. You bet.
And ask the city council and whatever action you take to consider the facts as far as these contacts I attempted to make and did make prior to all these, this issue coming up.
But let, sure.
Steve, just a very, very simple question. You did get the certified mail that you signed for, correct?
Yes, the June, the June letter.
The June letter that was sent on the 7th, you signed for on the 22nd, I believe, is what the information that Mr. Koba talked about. You did get that letter?
Yes, I got it.
And that letter said that if you didn't mow it within five days, the city was going to do that, correct?
I think that's what it said.
And you didn't mow it within five days, and so on the 6th day, the city mowed it. That's really the issue, isn't it?
I contacted the city within five days, and since there's no appeal process, it seems like the, all the federal governments, state governments, county governments all have appeal processes, but I wasn't able to appeal that order. And then the mowing took place, I believe, about July 10th. Or I think this bill states...
When did he sign?
July 8th.
I think it was June 28th, wasn't it?
It was June 28th was when the mowing took place.
When did you last mow it prior to June 28th?
I can't recall.
Had you mowed it this year?
I don't believe I mowed it this year, in anticipation of, when I started in May, to continue with the demolition, when I called to, to see if that demolition permit was still in force.
See, and I'm afraid that's where it gets a little confusing here. I think you're talking about two different things. You're talking, when you're calling city, you're looking for verification on the demolition permit being in place for you on that lot, and we're here to talk about the mowing of the property, so...
Well, the demolition...
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but please understand that as a neighbor right next door, across the street, or wherever I might be, I don't really know what the process is, you know, I don't know what's, what you're looking to do there. So I think it's, it's the fact that it was unsightly and unkept to those viewing it, and they took action, asked the city to take action, and that's what we did. So I think there's two separate issues here, and obviously, we're more than willing to discuss with you, and I would encourage you and John and I to have discussion on the building that still stands, the structure that still stands. But at this point, I think we need to go back to really what the issue is here.
When you mentioned that the neighbors didn't know what the situation was, that goes back to anonymous phone calls. If it was a neighbor that made the call, there's no way to communicate to them, it's one way. It's really not an open process this way. And also with the lack of appeal rights, I don't believe it's, I hate to say a word, but I don't believe it's a fair process.
You are aware that the process that's in place here is the, I mean, this is nothing more than the state's process. The state's process says, and I mean, I don't think that any reasonable person would, first of all, you don't need a demolition permit to mow your lawn. You don't need a demolition permit to keep the weeds down. And so there's no need to communicate with, with neighbors or anybody else. The only need to communicate is the need to communicate with you, which you've acknowledged has occurred. The state statute, which is parroted in the city code, says that you get this notice, you receive the notice, you're given five days, you're given five days' notice to do that, which a, by any objective standard, a responsible property owner would do, keep the weeds down on your property, and you failed to do that, and the city came along and mowed it. That's really what happened, isn't it?
I think I would take issue with the part that you said about the state doesn't have any appeal process. I think the state has appeal processes in practically every administrative department there is.
Well, the provisions that apply to this are exactly the state statutes. The Norfolk City Code follows the state statutes in regard to that. And, you know, it's, it, it's just a question of whether the property is overgrown to the, to the extent of the code, and it doesn't, you know, it doesn't, you don't need an eyewitness to say, there's some property that has, got weeds on it that are more than 12 inches tall. You can go out there and see that any time of the day or night, and when you failed to respond to the notice, you failed to be responsible in the maintenance of the property. The city did what the statute said, which is what the city code says, which is to mow it and charge it for the cost. So, and that's, that's really the only, the only issue. And none of this would be an issue if you just mowed the property.
Well, at the last meeting, it was tabled so that I could present evidence, and I've presented that evidence. I think it was written in a newspaper account that if I could show these phone records, that the decision might hinge on that, or could, would, should hinge on that. And that was the understanding I left this meeting with.
Well, the, the information that I looked at as you, as you passed along here indicated that there were some phone calls, a minute or two minutes or a short duration, you don't know who you talked to, you've got multiple issues about demolition permits, mowing grass, about garages that are supposed to be demolished. Most objective or reasonable people would look at that and say, if you got all of those issues with the city, you're probably trying to talk about things that are related to demolition permits, related to, related to the garage that's been condemned. You don't usually, you know, in this community and most communities, there's not a whole lot of discussion with codes officials about the need to mow weeds, about the need to mow grass. That's, that's not, so by any objective standard, you wouldn't think that any of those things have anything to do with mowing grass. And you come up here and tell the elected officials that, here's some phone calls, I mean, you don't even say who you talked to or what you talked about, so...
Well, I appreciate that. I think what we need to do is move forward. Mr. Spots, I appreciate it. I, I think what we're doing is considering the $237.99 assessment that's before us.
I would just like to make a statement.
Sure.
Just to add clarity to this, that the, the reason that I tabled this is not to imply that John or Steve weren't doing their job. I think they do a great job day in and day out. But my five years on this council, I don't ever remember a property owner coming forward. And so I commend Mr. Spots for coming forward to have his day, to use the process. I figured, the letter was issued in June, it's almost October 1st, that's four months. If we can't wait two more weeks to give the council time to look at the facts and give him his due, just, you know, his due process. So that's, that's the main purpose for tabling it. I think he's had that. I feel he's had that. I think staff's been very professional. Any, any time that I've, I've talked with them about this issue, they've given me all the information that I've ever asked for.